Auto order the special regular meeting of council for January the 10th, 2022.
I'd like to submit my written motion and the same resolution, 2021176. Thank you.
I think that will go to administration. Okay, and I just had a server error, but I have motion to accept the agenda. Counsel Foulton, Counsel Pro, on the room.
All right.
Counsel Valentin, just join me.
So on Zoom, we have Counsel Valentin and Counsel McMurdo. In chambers, we have Counsel Coburn, Counsel Ellsworth, Counsel Foulton, Counsel Pro, Counsel Wong, and Counsel Mountmark just blocking it. We're going to agenda on the item, so water heater, water discretion, I turn over to the city manager.
Sure, the administration received a number of questions from members of council. On the water utility, we are asked to prepare responses, which we've done. And I have those here, so unless there is another method that a council wanted to do this. Just wondering if people online, Braden or sorry, Counsel McMurdo and Valentin, can you see the question slide?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay.
Prior to getting into answering the questions from administration, I think it would be wise to go through with some background on these issues and why these questions were prompted from council.
Okay, that would be you that.
I'm willing to share that burden with the other co-signees on the request for the meeting, but I can start it off. So for my part, I've had a number of members of the community come to me with billing inconsistencies from the city of Thompson. Responses back to those individuals were unprofessional, to say the least. Understanding based on, well, I guess we'll hear from administration where we're at with respect to metering and what sort of things are set up for, whether it's billing complaints. But I've seen anything from like a why meters missing, areas not metering, although I will suggest is probably not a large amount, as the administration will probably confirm. But inconsistencies across the whole, and the billing inconsistencies were particularly difficult for me to hear, where you had one customer with a variety of bills for the same location for the same period of time that ranged anywhere from a couple thousand to $7,000. I know that you're aware of that yourself, and other members of council were certainly made aware of that. So in light of what I've seen, I feel like that we have this discussion to ensure that we have consistency across the board in our end fairness and a mechanism and means for the public to appeal decisions. Because right now, what I'm hearing from the public when they approach the city and other city representatives and not satisfactory by any means, in my opinion.
Thank you. I think when we go through the questions administration has prepared today, then it would be then as council would be up to us to set policy if we want to see different than what is already in place going forward.
I'd like to open up for those who supported the motion, please.
Yes.
If they choose to speak.
Counsel Pro, you have any comment?
Well, Counsel Roser has had it first, but I could go after.
Okay, but yous were the ones that had signed the thing, as I'm going to first, okay?
Okay. Yeah, I've received also complaints of inconsistencies, but a major concern about the billing structure of from citizens about the quarterly billings and the monthly billing. And when there is a leak, it tends to go too far, and the bill is quite high, and many of them tend to board it. So that's my biggest concern, that bringing forward from the citizens to the table.
Okay, thank you. Wong, you were also on the signature.
Yeah, thank you, Senator. Pretty much some of my concerns are so same as the rest of the two other councils. That's where it's at. And my side, some people came to me to ask me this question about the estimation billing. So for the priority that they say the malfunction, the meter malfunction, so they estimate the amount. So why the estimate always high, like which is normally they use about 200 bucks a quarterly, but when the estimation comes, it could be like six to eight hundred dollars. But after the, sometimes the problem that would be solved, they still estimate for result. Could be go up to a year or six months or so and so. So there's a concern about when the city go to fix that estimation. If the meter is malfunction, do they have a program to replace the meter? And some do, some do have the problem and we solve, but the problem, the question is, when they had the meter fixed, but the estimation never got refund or credit. So the money being paid out to the amount what they estimate, so it's not fair. For instance, like the hydro, they sometimes they do estimate higher because of something happened to the meter. But after they adjusted, you always see the credit, if they charge you more. But not in this case in city water, so they are very big concerned. So those are money, where the goods, how are we going to make that extra money accountable? So those are not a concern that I've got from the public, so other than that, I think we will.
So with the interest of this, Les, I do recognize your hand, but these are the three that made the concern. So I think we'll go through the presentation, and then I'll recognize you first after the presentation is made. I'll come back with your questions so that we do get the presentation, because a lot of these questions might be answered in the presentation.
Mayor Smoak, I was a signatory as well, and if I could just have a minute or two.
Okay.
Yeah, so just, I think Counsel Fountain touched on at least two of the three things that I put forward to administration with respect to accuracy in the metering and the billing process to like, to ensure that there's confidence in the overall system and that everybody's paying their share, right? Like when, I've heard from people that, you know, they expect, or they understand that they pay for water, but they just want to make sure that they're paying their fair share. So that was brought up by Counsel Fountain, as well as the dispute resolution process, where I think we could do better with defining, you know, criteria for disputes, for one, and then what the result, resolution or compensation process looks like. And I have an idea or two after that, that I can bring up after the presentation. And then the last thing that I put forward to administration was was asset management in the water treatment plant itself, just being that it's such a critical piece of infrastructure for the C A Thompson. I had put forward some questions as to what and how we're going about the preventative maintenance schedule there, so thank you.
Okay.
Sure, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
So as I noted, the administration was provided with a number of questions from members of council. We've gone through them here and categorized them, and then we'll be answering. So the first question was how many households and or commercial developments do not have meters in place and why? The entire list of the city's tax rolls provided to council, the March 22nd, 2021 meeting. It's in camera, but every member of council can then go look there and see every single property, which ones are missing meters. As of that meeting, a number of, a number of meters have been installed, and then they're still working on a few of the small other ones that are still outstanding. So that rule is available to council. If there's any particular questions, you can bring them forward to me, and I can have the answer prepared for that. At the time, there were discussions held on which ones are active, which ones didn't have meters because they were shut off or owners in the building. Some of them had zero consumption, meters were not there, and some were properties that were bare land. So as you know, that's all in all that for the March 22nd, 2021 meeting. How to address businesses remain without meters, refer back to the previous questions. From time to time, there are legitimate reasons for no meters, but those very rare. It could be a vacancy, the zero consumption, the shut off fees paid, or it's a piece of bare land. The city's follows a notification process for metering through the cities that goes out with the different tax bills and utility bills, which has been reviewed by the pub. And if it's found that a building is without a meter, the city is required to charge back the fees per the pub standards and per the bylaw, 1842, 2010, under parts nine and 10. How many households consumption is estimated versus metered? A review of the utility this summer identified that any time just under 5% of the utility is being estimated. Since the summer review, a number of meters have been replaced, as I said, or being replaced. If a meter's failed, the costs are estimated until such time as the meter is inspected or replaced. Not all homeowners respond to estimate notices and request to contact. And in that case, the current process is the city remains under the estimated billing. The other option would be to seek entry to the home, to do an inspection of the meter and replacement, which would require the homeowner's cooperation or seeking a warrant through the Court of Queen's Bench as outlined under the municipal act to access that meter. Where meters are not functioning, how is consumption estimated? Consumption estimation charges are kind of discussed under parts six, seven, nine, and 10 of the bylaw. When a meter failure is identified, an estimate is calculated in one of two ways. If the customer has a history of consumption, the bill estimate is based on the average consumption over the customer's history with the city. Where the customer has no history of consumption, the bill is estimated based on the public utility board's standard consumption rate number. So that's a number that's maintained by the public utilities board. On the bill, there's typically a note posting that the consumption of billing is estimated and requesting the tenant or the homeowner to contact the city. What's the battery life of a meter? Meters have a 10-year warranty for the battery and another 10-year prorated warranty. If the meter stops transmitting, the meter is flagged in the system during that quarterly read, and a note is placed on the water bill for the homeowner to contact the city to arrange for a meter inspection or replacement. If determined that the meter has failed, the cost is paid by the city using the standing P O plumber that is hired by the city. If it's determined that the meter has been tampered with or failed to be protected or damaged, the cost is to the homeowner. That's outlined under the bylaw. Who's qualified to install meters? What assurance does the city have that meters are installed correctly? Any certified plumber or trained city employee can install a meter. On behalf of the city, though, we typically do it using our standard P O plumber, who does all the replacements on our behalf. Meters are to be installed and photographed after installation, and the city would have to visually inspect each meter to verify if there's any issue with any of those. And those steps are outlined under part six and part 11, subsections 27 to 35 of the bylaw. Do meters require calibration? No meters do not require calibration, they're calibrated at their manufacturing facility. If someone suspects that a meter is inaccurate, they can be sent to Neptune and Toronto bench testing. That's under section six of the bylaw. The test is $250 per the fee and fine schedule, including the cost for freight both ways. The parameters for the meter to be considered accurate under subsection nine, part six of the bylaw, is between 98.5% and 101.5% of actual. One meter, we've had meters sent out and never had them outside of those parameters unless it was a complete failure. But we have had one running meter that has come outside of those parameters, and it was at 97, so it was actually under reporting. If the meter is found to be correct, once it's sent to Neptune, then the bill is paid by the homeowner. If the meter is found to be incorrect, then the city pays the testing fees to Neptune. And typically, what has been found at the city, as well as with colleagues across the province, is that when water meters start to wear out, they really lower the natural consumption, not higher. That's found to be consistent across municipalities in the province. How's the meter data for businesses read? Meters for businesses are read using the same remote electronic method that's used for households. The city owns a dedicated data logger and antenna specifically to read the Neptune meters. It's done through a drive-by process where the city's driven in the grid. The data is collected remotely and then downloaded onto the software and packages here at the city in the finance department afterwards. Is monthly billing or notice as possible? Is there a means to flag accounts with extreme variance from norms to avoid leaks accumulating charges over a quarter at pretty expense? Meter reading and billing is per bylaw, 1842, part seven. With options, the bylaw provides options for monthly, bi-monthly, or quarterly billing. Quarterly is considered the minimum under the bylaw. The current city practice is to provide quarterly meter reading and billing. It says, this would come down to a council direction to administration. Now billing can, the meter reading and billing can be increased, just with the understanding that there will be increased demands on staff time. And the, basically, we'll be staffing implications, but that would really come down to a budget discussion and decision by council on how to proceed if like changes to the meter reading and billing. Can we move to e-billing? E-billing was reviewed by the current council through the budget process, specifically with the virtual city hall software that is used in some of the municipalities that we could also be using at the city of Thompson. At the time, council determined that e-billing was a greater expense than this power than current method. And at the time, there is the decision not to proceed with that change. Council can at any time revisit virtual city hall through the budget process. And I can provide direction to us if that's something that council would like to see. Just a reminder to council that it provides a new option for payment and billing, but it still requires people who want to sign up for it. So it won't necessarily capture 100% of the population, but it would provide a new option. Is there a system in place to appeal a bill? Can we improve? There's currently no formal process for appeals under bylaw, 1842, 2010. Appeals technically can be made to council, or if there's any issues of trial, directly to council, or to the public utilities board has an appeals process. Whenever a member of the public or owner comes to council with an issue, there's a discussion that either committee of council, and there's a feeling that the bylaws have been followed. The owner is informed of the decision, and they're basically referred to the public utilities board as their outlet if they have, would like to proceed with the grievance against the city on that bylaw issue. The administrative team has explored other options for council. Some municipalities have an appeals committee of council that sees appeals on all bylaws and issues, whereas there's other places that have it built directly into the bylaw. Our discussions with Manitoba Municipal Relations recommends that appeal processes be developed for each individual bylaw, rather than having a universal appeals committee. So if we wish that to be developed, that's something that the administration could work on developing, specific to that bylaw. Why have some customers not been billed for years and then suddenly billed through the entire backlog? The billing is per the public utilities board standard and per bylaw, 1842, 2010, requires that the administration, once an owner or a home is identified as having, not having a meter or not having to pay, we're required to build the entire amount per bylaw and standard. The city's confirmed with the pub that we are doing proper advertising for requirements to have a meter to pay, and that those notices have been continued and ongoing. So it's really, that's what we're required to do by the way that the bylaw and the standards are set up. Were large bills of accrued, can we set up a payment system for customers? Payments are under section, part nine of the current bylaw. Owners can always make payments anytime until the bills are transferred to taxes. But there are penalties that are incurred when there's a large outstanding bill, and that's also a standard requirement. Once transferred to taxes, a tax sale agreement can be entered into by the homeowner. A special payment agreement can't be entered into, you await penalties under the public rules for the bylaw as it's currently laid out, and we believe that's a standard that the public requires across the province. In the case of rental properties where bills are not paid by the tenant, can the city not notify the landlord in some way to avoid a massive bill going to the landlord? Landlords must require or register the property as a rental property with the city through the utilities department. Then the landlords and owners will receive copies of the tenant's bills each quarter. It's the responsibility of the landlord or the homeowner to register, move-ins and move-outs, because that's not something that the city actively tracks itself, it needs to be notified. And then notices are sent to the landlords if there's outstanding bills, and the situation where as long as standing, it might be going to taxes, notices are sent to the landlords in those cases as well. For trailers, there's concerns about meters outside of the building envelope, particularly with regards to freezing, any solutions. This is covered under part 11 of the bylaw. Meters are to be installed within the premises or a building. But there are a subsection under 34 that does provide an option. When in the opinion of the director of meter cannot be reasonably be installed within the building or premises intended to be supplied with water, the customer shall, at the customer's sole cost, construct and maintain a container for a meter, and such containers shall in all respects, including location, construction size, access, and otherwise, householder be satisfied satisfactory to the director. I'm aware that a number of people run their own heat traces and built their own enclosures for this exact reason. Also a reminder that we did add a new inspection fee to the fee and fine schedule, I believe in 2021, which allowed people who wanted to take their meters from outside of their trailers and move them inside the trailer to apply to the city, and then the city would do an inspection, I believe the fee was for $50, so that the meter could be installed inside the home but not bypassed. And there are also options for people to apply for the bleeder program, and those are covered under subsections 14 through 16 under part 11. What percentage of treated water is lost due to breaks and or leakage? How does the totalized consumption compare with what is accounted for with meters? So the complete numbers that I have are for 2019. This is from a submission that we put to the public utilities board on rates. For treated water to the system, 2.9 cubic meters or 2.9 million cubic meters went out. Consumption was 1.15 million cubic meters. A corporate customer took 600,000 cubic meters, and non-revenue water consisted of 1.15, 1.2 million cubic meters, which represents about 40% of what produced by the system. Non-revenue water consists of firefighting water, the yearly water main directional flushing program that goes up throughout the entire summer, the winter bleeder program for the homes, particularly in the trailer park, who apply to the bleeder program and to water breaks and leaks due to the age of infrastructure. Given the issues at the wastewater treatment plant, are there any major issues or infrastructure concerns with regards to the water treatment plant? Our largest risks at the moment at the water treatment plant are through staffing and staff training. The qualifications to run water plants as well as wastewater plants are highly sought. And what we find is once people are trained, they have a ticket to go anywhere in Canada, as it's a universal ticket across the country. We've checked this with other municipalities, it's not only us. The city Winnipeg struggles with this as well as most of our sister communities throughout the province, that it's hard to keep operators here. The plant is aged, it was one of the original buildings to the city. So there have been upgrades to certain technologies in it, but it is an aging piece of infrastructure. There's always the changing regulatory requirements, and we're still working on the backup generator power, as the system does not have backup electrical. It has backup diesel for pumping water, but not electrical for operating the internal systems. It's partially budgeted by council, and we're working with the water services board to secure the full funding through our more administrative type things. Where are we in terms of establishing preventative maintenance schedule of the water treatment plant? Is this going to mean hiring additional personnel? PM schedule already exists at the water treatment plant, it was developed by Valet. When the city inherited the plant from Valet, the city implemented the exact same plan and has maintained it since. There are two dedicated positions at the water plant and one relief position. We also have management coverage should emergency situations come into play. We're experiencing high turnover in staff, as I noticed, a high demand profession. And like I said, once ticketed, you can manage a job anywhere in Canada. There is the potential to increase staff to support the water plant or wastewater plant, but it will result in increased cost in utility. And instrumentation services are provided by Valet for the water treatment plant as part of the water treatment plant transfer agreements. That service is not provided to the wastewater plant, that is exclusively to the water plant. Why are water breaks occurring in the same locations over and over? Most breaks are due to aging pipes and ground movement and the acidic ground conditions in the area. The majority of the original piping that was put into the city was ductile iron for water and clay tile for sewer. Most have not held up well. Unlike a lot of other communities, that was built out over time. Say conversations I had with the city of Winnipeg, some of their 100-year-old piping is still intact and operating fine, but they're piping from the 50, 60, 70s. The same ductile iron is all failing similar to ours. The issue that Thompson faces is because the majority of the utility was put in at the same time. It's all failing at the same time as well. And unlike other communities, where you see clustered in certain areas as it would develop, the analogy that's used in Thompson is kind of like the measles, the breaks are all over the place and it's very difficult to predict. Breaks are usually close together, but not in the exact same spot, except for fire hydrants, and they tend to migrate down the line. So one example I was given today is if there's a water break and they're preparing the steel for a clamp to be put on to secure it, there have been cases where as they're scraping that steel around it, the scraper can go break through the pipe, it's so thin. So it is so heavily corroded that even the hand pressure of scraping to prepare it to make a nice seal will then break right next to it. And the pipe is so fragile that as you maneuver the pipe to put the clamp on, it can then result in breaks just down out of sight. So then that's why several days later or several weeks later, a water break comes up several feet away. This has been identified by the city several years ago, I believe by the previous administration, previous councils, which is why the city's always worked hard to get money from the water services board, and it started the multi-year renewal process that has been submitted to the public utilities board. And that's also why the administration was so aggressive on getting the ISIP grants, the $48 million for water wastewater line renewals, because the plan in place currently is to replace all those over 40 years. That's the standard of funding that we would have through our utility, would have taken 40 years to make those replacements. So by lining these grounds, we can greatly accelerate that, and hopefully reduce the waste to do in the system and the number of breaks that we can respond to. That is the series of questions that I received from council. And Mayor Smoak, I see that Counsel Valentin raised her hand during the middle of the presentation.
Thank you. Counsel Elfrin?
Yeah, my question certainly wasn't in the presentation, it was, we, I thought we had, and I've asked questions several times. I are a student that will over a lot of the information we have, the billing, all of that stuff, where is that?
That, the student's information is included in here, so the student did go through all of the billing, looked at to see how many were estimated, how many meters were not working. That's where it was identified that there was less than 5% that were not currently working. And all the work that was identified by the student was then passed over to the utility, who then started replacing those meters and doing whatever work is necessary to get those back into, back into back into working order.
Anything further?
No.
Counsel Valentin?
Thank you, Mayor Smoak. I actually jumped in there during the presentation because we couldn't see the slides as you were presenting. Not sure if they can kind of be run through now, even while we have the discussion part of it. So it was up to slide six where you couldn't, I couldn't anyways, but I'm not very techy. So one, a couple of my comments are that, under the less than 5% that are estimated, if, could you explain to me, when would a meter become an estimate reading? What causes that, and how is that identified under that less than 5%? And my second thing is, I would be open to having another budget discussion about the monthly billing. We did discuss that at the finance and admin committee meeting, I believe, last year. And it was the recommendation at that time because of the increased cost to keep it quarterly. But with that and the e-billing that you discussed, I know I would be willing to see those numbers again as part of budget discussion. And my third point is that I would look to administration to come forth with some recommendations for an appeal process with some of the suggestions that you had outlined. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll just answer the question, the one question on the 5%. Counsel McMurdo has raised this now as well. So can, just to check with the counselors, can you see the slide that's up now and says, how long is the battery life of the meters?
I cannot.
No, I cannot.
Can you see that?
No. Yep.
Okay. I'm gonna present it this unorthodox way because I don't know what happened there. Um. The less than the five percent can uh, can be caused by a number of issues. It could be the straight out ballot battery failure. It could be um, material inside the meter itself. It could be a failure of a mechanical component inside the meter. Uh, could also be that the meter has not been picked up as having the reading. Uh, the city does do multiple readings from time to time. When uh certain meters are not being picked up, they'll re-drive it to try to pick up the years. Um, or it could be damage to the meter itself. Which would then require the inspection. So there's a number of issues, this this, there's no diagnostic on the meter that tells you. What they really identify is that there's no reading coming through. Or if they see some sort of a reading that doesn't make sense in the software. Um, that's how it would be identified that there's an issue.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, uh, councillor McMurdo.
Um, yeah, thanks Mayor Smook and thanks Anthony uh and administration for all the work that went into that, that slideshow in the presentation. And getting to those questions that were put forth. Um, I guess. Like, I I would agree with the the comment Kathy made to start that um, I would like to see some recommendations as far as um, a policy. For uh, for dispute and resolution that doesn't refer everything to the, to the P U B. And other than that, I had a couple of of questions. I'll start with the, the the PM scheduling at the water treatment plant. Um, you said that it's basically the exact same that valet was carrying out. And I've I've spoken with some mechanics that that did those PMs and the feeling from them and and some people is maybe that that isn't the case. So do we have a a paper trail, is there evidence that? That the PM program that was developed and maintained by valet is being um, conducted and carried out by trained and qualified personnel for the city? That's one question, I don't know if you want to get to that one before I ask or ask another.
Um. I've never had that relayed to me, so I will be followed up on that. Uh, I've been assured that we do have a PM in place that is being followed, so if there's concerns. I'd like to know further about those concerns and I will ask for information on that.
Okay, um, I'll bring a, a few more specifics, maybe um. An email or a phone call. Um, the other one, uh, we've talked about the monthly billing, I I don't recall, but. Um, is there, was there information presented on how long? It takes uh, a city personnel to perform a once throughout the city to to read all the meters, is it? You know, is it a morning, a day, a week?
I believe the actual read itself uh takes a day is my understanding. Of driving the city, and the information is audited to make sure that the numbers have been uh picked up correctly. Basically that they've hit all the buildings and if not, then the drive has to be repeated. Um, I can find out further how much work goes into the billing. Um.
Okay.
Actually, when you have owners uh checking the meters, identifying ones where there's issues. And then also preparing the double bills when there's a landlord versus a a tenant. So, but I can find out how long it takes to go through a cycle of bill uh preparation.
Okay, thanks, that that just might help um, inform us when in the discussion of the the monthly billing and what kind of costs. Will be associated and um. Finally, I I commend administration for sure and council for. For receiving that uh water and sewer grant, that's that's gonna be a game changer, I hope anyways. Is there? I I didn't, I didn't ask this and I apologize before, so not not to put you on the spot and if you can come back, but do we have? Evidence that the the new infrastructure where it has went in has um, has performed and. Prevented some of these repetitive breaks and maintenance costs? And if if you're not prepared for that, can um? Is that something that we can look into to kind of at least? Show us that we're, we're going down the right track? I demonstrate the residents we are, sorry.
We do have data on that, that uh, most of the spots that we've had um. Replacements of the uh ductile iron with either PVC, I believe in the uh eighties and nineties and then into HDPE. High-density polyethylene piping now. Um, there's been a huge reduction in the number of breaks. Um, when there are issues, it's less usually a break with this material. And usually a fusion weld issue of some sort of an installation issue. Um, that is typically caught during warranty, not always. Um, so yeah, the departments have noted that where there has been a renewal. That the number of repairs that are required to happen there uh drop substantially. Just remembering that we're discussing main lines. We're not discussing people's individual services to their homes. That we're not renewing, we're talking about the big main lines that cause the issues for the city.
Okay, thanks for that, and um, I think that's good for the public to know that. Yeah, over the course of this uh, this program that's now underway that. Hopefully we do see a significant reduction in now water loss to breaks, so thanks for answering the questions.
Thank you, uh, councillor Wong.
Thank you, Mayor Mayor, after seeing the slide, we create a few of questions that I'd like you to ask. And hopefully we can get some answer later on, perhaps it's like, not, not too long. Uh, if you can, please uh go back to the slide that we said, two thousand nineteen. The consumption, as you mentioned that the. The information that I processed, so. Why would be the information? Because what I recall the uh, the information was about forty percent that is on news, right? Which is the produce, the mid two point nine or?
There's something happening with the screen share again.
My, my revelation is like, maybe the two point nine million cubic. Meter or two point nine billion, that's.
Million.
Okay, so you said the consumption is only like sixty percent, which is revenue. Forty percent is based on fire. The water break and all that, to me is a big concern. I can't see for firefighting using forty percent of the 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 water make. So that means. The majority of the forty percent is water break. That costs forty percent. Of the, 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 the production of. What we pay for, so somehow we think we need to. We need to tackle that issue somehow, am I wrong or like the?
You're correct, that's what I just explained, that's why we are so aggressive at getting those grants. The only way to tackle it is to replace those pipes. So we have the fire, we have the directional flushing program. We have the winter bleeder program, which we should probably look at the parameters on that. And then we have water breaks and leaks due to the aging infrastructure. Until we replace that infrastructure, it will continue with that reach.
I'm not disagree, Anthony, uh, Mayor Mayor, what I look at is like. For instance, right now, the French school, there's a water break. It's over two weeks now, it's not even do anything with it. So those can be tackled, even though the infrastructure, all I get it. I understand the point about the, the, the money that we are getting to to renew that. But what I'm saying like, we can do better for that. We, I think somehow as a council, we we should develop a policy. When the water break will report, there's gotta be a timeframe to tackle it. Not a land of water running for two weeks, perhaps sometimes a month. So that, that's ridiculous to me, in my opinion. So those things we can, we can, we can take it, you know, renew it, just to do it a better system. So that's one thing. Another thing about the, the meter, I'm using the utility as an example. Hydro, stico. Throughout the year, I got them to come and replace my meter without asking me. And I never got billed. So this is what I think somehow people that terrified. Every time we do ask the city to do something about a meter. You gotta charge them two hundred fifty, five hundred bucks, this and that, I don't know, there's a, something we can look into that. Maybe we have to develop a system. The meter is owned by the city. Somehow, if you want to collect money, we should make sure that the meter is functioning. How? I think using the hydro or the stico system is pretty good. So replace it o- occasionally, but take it out for uh inspection or whatever. It shouldn't be cost to the consumer. I think that's one of the reasons, that's why consumer scared to report. To the city for that part, so somehow I think, that thing we can overcome that issue in the future. So other than that, I think so far, the report is pretty accurate based on what you got from the bylaw uh. Policy. I think we see can uh, we can tune up the by law, the, the policy to make it better. And uh, the queue system, I I like to see that happen as well. And last thing, Madam Mayor. What we really cost if we go from quarterly to monthly, we say staffing. What I understand is all computerized now. So you, 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 you send a signal to the computer to, to get all the, the reading from the, all the household. And clean out the, uh, the, the statement or the invoice. What will cost extra if we don't go from quarterly to monthly, ex- exactly, I, I do.
The system is not automated, councillor.
No?
The, the data's collection system is automated through a radio signal. But then the data has to be imported and manipulated into the system. So it has to be imported in and then individual, exactly.
Oh my goodness.
So the billing is then done, and then when there's a request for the double bill, basically one to the tenant versus a homeowner, that is done manually as well.
All right, appreciate it, thank, thank you, that, that makes sense to me now. So maybe, again, we can, we can look into that system, twenty one century.
In terms of your comments on the um, question or the cost for the meters. We do it that way because that's a requirement in the bylaws, so council wants to change that. Uh, we can change that through the bylaw, right now it requires us to charge it, based on what the fee and fine schedule is. Just understanding though that the utility, like a municipal budget, has to be a balanced budget. So if, if there's an increased cost to the utility to change out meters, that that has to be on a cost recovery basis. So if the individual doesn't pay it, then the entire utility will have to pay it. So what I'm basically saying is, if the individual doesn't pay it when they get a new meter, then the utility rate would have to go up across the city to balance that budget. Because it has to balance out somehow, so that's your, that's what you have to weigh as a.
I understand, I understand that part, so, but what I'm saying like. We can improve the system. You know, otherwise we are just. Continue this, this, the problem with the problem. So even though if we have to do something about the cost and recovery. Let's figure out, maybe we, that's what I, we suggest do that. Anyway, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Coburn.
Yes, a quick presentation. One thing I've been missing on there, the light fell out over the last year. Double meter. Now, I have a citizen who's been complaining about your bills were too high. Then I brought it towards the city, the city went down, I found those first. That the meter is, uh, she was paying both bills, hers and the neighbor's. And uh, I wanna know. I know that problem hasn't been rectified yet, she hasn't got no bills, but the meters haven't been changed. Right, that, that she's the, is still pumping. Another, the next door's meter, through there a meter. Now, the next door pays their water bill. But she's gotta pay two hours, she's not paying them right now, but she did ask you. I would like to know. How many, because when they were insulated, you know, in- installed the meters. It should have been written somewhere that they were connected. You know what I mean? One was connected to the other. Right? Well now, how many places in the city do we have like that, where people are paying double cost? Right, is that the only one? But it should be, when the meter was installed, it should have said. That this one runs too, right? Do you agree, is it, is it there?
I would agree that that's what should have been done, it wasn't done, that you identified it, and then I believe they've rectified that one. I think they're doing it uh, through arithmetic.
Do you agree with that?
Yes, yes. Others, not that I'm aware, but I can ask if we're aware of any. I'm sure if we're aware of it, we would not permit that to continue.
Shouldn't, uh, shouldn't we rectify and fixing the meters?
The one way we could do it is uh, through mandatory meter inspections. So that's where we have to send someone to each home. So we've had some discussions internally, should we be hiring a student? Or dedicating a utility staff to doing inspections in the upcoming years?
You know, so you, okay, Madam, I think. Uh. The cost of that, right, that's what you're saying, that if we want this stuff done, the cost. But look at the money we're bringing in, water bills. Where is it all at, gold? I know.
Goes towards our pay for the capital upgrades. Right, so a large proportion of what's put forward to the public utilities board. Why are the rates so high, the rates are so high? Because we're paying for all the water breaks and then trying to do the capital work. To upgrade the pipes, so that that eventually will come down. So that's how come the utility in Thompson so high, is because so much of the infrastructure is failing all at once. That's where hopefully this grant over the next five years, forty million dollars, should help to reduce some of those numbers.
You know, but that's still come back through the double meter. You know, that should be corrected as soon as possible, I think. You know, I can't see why us as a county or city or let that happen to people. And we don't know if it's happening or not, because we haven't identified that there's any other problem. Right, we can't have citizens because of what the city installed ten years ago, twelve years ago, when we installed water meters. Done something different. And then the, uh, then outcome. Uh, the administration, who's in charge of water. Charged double, instead, instead of doing the numbers, got back in. Right, I've heard you go back. It was two years with this citizen I was talking about. Right, it was two years, she paid double water bills. Now, why at the beginning of that time wasn't the meter? Installed the readings adjusted now? Because, as we all should know, the city should have won. That we.
I understand, councillor, I cannot, once you brought to my attention, we rectified it. And I can't speak to what.
But I would check out. And seeing if there's any others.
That, like I was saying, we would have to send in inspectors into every home to be sure of that. Or otherwise, people would have to self-identify and law laws seem to come and then have an inspection if they had an issue.
But shouldn't there be a report somewhere? Uh, that, um, the installation? The installation report should be all there. That this one is double meter. Should say right there, and then the people in the administration takes that information and then goes into the billings.
I believe the original installations were documented, but I don't believe there should ever have been a double in, in metering, so. Obviously it happened, I, I don't have an answer for you.
There is one, right, there's a double meter that we know about, right?
Yes.
But you know, I'd like very good that problem rectified. And uh, you know, I'm fine anymore. Uh, we charged too much for water bills, I think we did. Never reclaim the mine. But I think there's too much, like councillor Holland said. There's too much indiscriminate, too much difference in certain bills. Right, and I think we gotta, you know, well, as if you say, we, we do it. We'll, we only do it, take your water bills and come before us, like, no, it's council. We can't make policy now, but it never comes to us for policy. Right, you know, in the future, in the future, I would say, we should have meetings. I've gotta take that back, you know.
This, this uh, the water utility went to council twice. In this term, so went to the public utility or the uh, public courts committee and. Spring of twenty twenty, uh, on March and as well as in April, so it's been to committee. Um, no comments or receipt back.
But this is where it's up to us, it's come to us, can we take all these recommendations today to go back to the one where we see? Where we want to set a policy? Okay, thank you, councillor Holland.
Thank you, uh, first of all, let me say thank you to the administration, I know that. There's a lot of questions, you came back, the answers are good, gives me a, a certain level of confidence with the system. Uh, that I didn't have before, I realize a lot of that was inspiration from the bylaw. Shame on me for not knowing that bylaw. Um, and I would add some of those answers on my, um. I think ultimately, uh, if we come out of here, our best. The best thing that we can get out of this meeting today is move forward towards the appeal process. I think the appeal process is a way to identify where we have issues like double metering or over metering or inconsistent billing. I'd like to uh, push that, I know there's support from a lot of people, uh, that that happened. I'd like to see that happen sooner rather than later. As opposed to sending people around house to houses, the safety issue there as well as you're probably well aware. Giving people the opportunity to come in and uh. Discuss their billing or appeal their billing formally, I think is definitely necessary. And above that, I'd like to see some sort of automation of that system, it sounds very uh inefficient. Uh, what I would like to see come out of the system, whatever system we put in, if if that happens. Is say you live at Baffin, we all know Baffin. That individual had the sign because he had the water break that ran close to a year. Um, you know. Let's use him as an example, you've got two neighbors side by side, one paying eight hundred dollars. Every quarter, and the other's not paying anything. You, currently, it sounds to me like you couldn't go look at that and see that automatically based on site without manually doing. What I'd like is for, if we have a system in place where you can locate it. Maybe not necessarily on a map, but it has some geo-reference. You can go and see, you know. What neighbors side by side are consuming to identify some of those issues. And to that. And and to that alleviate the burden on whoever's doing those manual entries. Uh a system like that would be ideal. Uh last but not least, Madam Mayor, I'd just like to know, I noticed there's someone here from the uh landlords association, the ad hoc committee. Uh wondering if we are receiving a presentation from them or not, certainly expected one, it was open to get one.
Uh not, not today, but I think that's so part of after this, this process was over that we will. So they can hear also what the, what the rules are, and. I think that's where part of this appeal process and that would come in would benefit them.
Good, and if I could just add, was there any, um. I know I expressed hope to see some automations, there any plan to get an automated system in place?
I'll have to explore that further, um see if there is any possibility to have some of that done through Luci. The asset management software we've been discussing, which would be able to geo-reference some of the stuff that you said. I'm not familiar enough with the software, I don't actually use it myself, so I'll have to ask, that's the beyond my understanding, but I'll get the answer.
If uh we were to implement the uh. A system whereby the inconsistent billing or issues were, you know, will be heard by a third party. What sort of timelines would we be looking at to implement that, months, years? Would you know, I think?
I wouldn't know, it would be depending on what the the changes, so remember the the things that are being proposed here require change of bylaw. To be as far as us doing the research that you want, uh coming up with options for you, council will give us the direction and then we'll do the three meetings. Um it would probably also have to have the public hearing as well. Um I'm not sure if this change would have to go to public, I don't believe so, but um I'll look into the process for that.
Finally, Madam Mayor, I'd like to move that we move for direct administration to look into. Uh putting in a system to review inconsistent billing and whatnot formally. So if you could ask for a second or for that motion, I'd appreciate it and take a vote.
So can we make that motion?
Um excuse me, I I didn't uh hear clearly what councillor Fountain had said there, sorry to jump in.
Asking to formalize through a motion, uh having that system in place where people can uh. Bring issues with their billing up to a third-party system or some system, wouldn't matter for the third party or not.
I know we have wrote down here about an appeal process and reporting process. You know, reference map, third party, all those things that are actions, but I'm not sure, can we make a motion or?
Yes, it's a regular meeting, Council, so if there's a move, you're going to need a second there.
I see Andre's seconding that, I I I would as well. Is if it's it's to move to to essentially action this uh development of a of an appeals process, right?
Okay, so it's it's a move by Jeff. To action the appeal process, the reporting process and investigating the third party. As part of it, um I don't know if you wanted to change anything.
Uh maybe change the wording, Madam Mayor, to a complaint-based appeal system.
Okay.
The second is by council approval.
It's taken by conster proof, all those in favor? Kathy, do you approve or not? Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna continue, but uh hands up, we are at six minutes to one, so um in concern of time. For those that have to to leave, uh with a council landmark next.
Okay, uh. I was just gonna add the. We have plans, we're gonna review this by law again, so we can add, I was thinking that with other counselors have already suggested that uh. So our residents are hesitant to replace their meters because of cost. Um we already have something that's unique advantageable where if there's a water break on a property. You have to two meters within the property that we we pay. Everybody pays for. Certain model water breaks. I know that some of us already have that in our insurance, our homeowners insurance. But the city uh quite rightly so, I I agree with it. To pay a small amount on our utility bills in order for us to cover. Uh some of these breaks. Maybe we could set something like that up, that we could put it to the bylaw that would cover the replacement of meters, so that we make sure that. Those are covered all the time, you know, if we're only replacing. Maybe twenty meters a year, I I don't know what the number is. But it would make things more accurate if we could get them right away, then people would be hesitant to call, and we get those replaced as quickly as possible, so that we have accuracy. And get rid of this. Some of the issue with that, I don't know if that would help us. But I think that'd be something that I'm sure that's almost pretty good to. Anything in order to get these meters replaced as quick as possible and stop the estimates. That's all, I was thinking of that, and then uh. I just thought it would be a simple way to help our. And I I like the idea of making this formal appeals process so that we can. Move quicker to to help these, especially in these situations where the meter. Would be uh the bills are are outrageous, um we know that people are using that much water, but. In the same token, we have to make sure that it's identified in our newsletters, I mean our billing, that if you have a leak, get it fixed right away. If you have a dripping faucet or toilet, um. A lot of our customers are still uh used to the days when equal value used to pay for our water. You know, long water in the days when people watered their lawn all night. Be creeks running down the middle of our streets because people watered the grass all night, and nobody does that anymore. But yeah, people don't recognize what would happen if you have a running faucet. Uh your bills gonna double um quite quickly. Anyway, uh I just hope that we could get that information of people and make sure that. You can't make sure that people read it, but make sure that they get it, that those, if you have. If you're big boss, you have a running toilet, it's gonna cost way better.
Thank you, conster pro.
Um most of it's been addressed already, but I guess the, I wasn't sure on the on the clarity of the answer for the question on. Like, when we we gather the data uh through the computer, but then manually do it. I'm sure other cities don't do it that way, or is that standard procedure?
Like I said, I'll have to get more details on how this is done, all I know is the process that we currently use. It's put into a database in the software, that is then downloaded off of the computer, and then they have to put it into our billing system. Sure, there's import functions that are parts that are automated, but there's a lot of manual work.
Oh, I don't have my hand up, or if I do, I'm sorry, I don't.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, after two or three times, but man, it was good to be identified. We've had a lot of conversations with utility. We have to be proactive instead of reactive. I remember a lady, four thousand dollars to contact me, it was a break, two children, single parent. I went to the process of council, I sat here in committee meetings, basically pay it, that's what the response was. Pay it, you gotta leak, oh my God, you'd have the awful late leak to get four thousand dollars, and even if it was so. Surely, even if the homeowner is not responding, for those of us that have worked in chemical plants, whether it be in the valet or wherever. Knows that the four thousand dollars is really not a real number, it's a real number to the homeowner. It's also cost us to be treating water over and over, because it's either going down the tunnel or going over the road, it's going somewhere. So the cost is even higher than that. The second thing that I'm really concerned about is, and I I did it, when 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 a taxpayer calls me, I don't, I don't know if I the city is much, or any burdens, I don't know. If it's gonna be investigated or code of conduct, so I'm a little scared to report anything anymore, and I want the public to know that. But I got a call during the Christmas break just recently, and I got pictures to show. And it's been asked before at public works meetings to have flags on our hydrants. So that people, whether it be the city that's blowing snow. Or whether it be a contractor's probably snow, would be able to know that there's an hydrant there, or in the case of our our fire department, they would know right away where the fire agent is. I got a picture here on copper road just recently, fire agent torn completely out of the ground. I don't know if that was by city or was by private, what I do know is, I hope there's no fire in that area, because our fire plant is not the work a lot harder. To stretch fire hoses to the next fire agent, there's the thing. We often look at big pictures, we look, don't look at the low-aiming fruit. Why in the world can't we mark the fire agents? In regards to the break over by the water or by the French school, I've heard nothing but complaints of people beating up their vehicles over there trying to get through. That's a real issue for people. And I take great exception in this chamber, when I hear people talking as if it's all the consumers' fault. Because there's a problem there, a problem there. Yes, some that we can do better with as a consumer. And if there's been identified on a bill that there is an increase in in water, we should contact the city and try to work with the city, but I think on the other hand of that. All of a sudden, another bill or someone flagged at four thousand dollars, I think that we should be be proactive, pick up the phone and say to the. The consumer, listen, either you've got a problem on that piece of property, or we got a problem, but collectively, we need to work together. To see what can be done. So I think the frustration I've heard over the last three years, and I'll sum it up with this, is that. The appeal process absolutely is a good idea, but it doesn't fix it, it's still that four thousand dollar bill. If that's the case. It only gives you a way to come and argue it, whether it's gonna be in your favor or not, and I've sat on appeals committees for years. So that's the, you're on the mercy of a board or or something, or some committee, if if that's going to happen or not. I don't know if we need to go to monthly billing, but boy, if I had a water leak like that, and I can afford to pay a water bill, I would want to know as soon as possible. And three months is way too long. So I would move that this council not only look at an appeal process. But we definitely need to go back again and look at the possibility. Of monthly billing or some proactive way that we can identify in a higher afternoon break, it's kind of hard to do that. With the system we got in place, to identify if there is an indeed a water break, if you had a water break on a on a Saturday, you're not gonna know that. Within your your, you know, you can have, you can have water leaking from your toilet, people, believe it or not, is not as familiar, it's a plumber or somebody. Oh, I got a leak in my toilet, I don't know that. So I wish you opened up the valves full wide and leave them alone. There's a possibility you're gonna get a four thousand dollar water, the water bill, or the toilet is flushing continuously. But as a city of Thompson. Collectively, mayor, council administration, we've got to go do better to our citizens, our business owners. Who's had, who's had nothing but grief, not saying that. Uh the 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 metering system wasn't way to go, I'm not here to argue that, that was long before my time. But we certainly need to listen to the people that lands us in this chamber when they say, we don't like the process, we've got issues. I do certainly thank the administration for bringing forth the questions being answered, and and that's all fine and dandy, it's we're now moving forward. Are we gonna work with the business? And are we going to work with the individual taxpayers? That all of a sudden says, I've got a six thousand other water biller. Last month you gave me, or last quarter, you gave me a credit. This time I got six thousand, I know families that have left Thompson. I don't know, they paid, they're gonna be good enough to pay water bills in the more air, and for other issues. So I think it's been a constructive meeting, but at the same time, we've caught with one proactive thing of basically to do, and that is to look at. Plus, we put in a system in place for appeals, I'm just gonna challenge you, that's one of many things that needs to be done. It's not the in and all about that. And 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 it'd be no different if someone had their their property tax increases, and I've been sitting on those committees along with other counselors. And you come to appeal it because you didn't like the decision was made. If that, if that appeal says, no, we think you're right, yes, they do. Get the opportunity to go to the government, but at the same time, it's not definitely what we're talking about. Let's fix it, if there's problems, let's fix the problems, thank you.
Thank you, uh conster Colburn for five comments.
Yes, uh well, the council was just touching, council problem tested earlier. Why can't we as the council have a board, like the board of revisions for to property tax? For our water bills, for our citizen complaints. We should be able to have a board of our council. That would meet with the people, like our board of revisions on taxes, now, is that possible?
Not under the current bylaw, but yes, that's something that you could write into a new bylaw.
So we'd have to go into the bylaw to get that goal.
That's right, you'd have to create an appeals process, which is what councillor Fountain was discussing.
Yeah, and then we've had our own council, wouldn't be an independent, we would have our own council. On that board.
Your option, how you'd like it as a council.
The option of council, the majority of council, how they want to see that one.
I think that's something we should move ahead with, and I think I'll bring it up in the future, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, um okay, and seeing how, uh I'm gonna go to the persons that uh put forwards. The original motion, do you have any uh one-minute comment, because we're already over time and.
If you don't mind, rather. Is it possible um to go back to a fee-based system as opposed to meter? Reason I raise that is, you know, soon we're gonna have to replace those with twenty years. Soon, it'll be the next term or the term after that, but is that even a possibility?
I will have to check, I don't believe so, I believe that it was a requirement of the public utilities board that we do implement meters. A number of our grants were contingent on having a news, which is why the decision.
I would like to thank all of council for the constructive talks we had here today, I think it's been great. I'd like to thank Anthony, it's been a great for all the work that they did leading up to today. Uh thank you, Susan, for attending, and I look forward for all of us working together uh in the very near future to move this forward. So with that, yes.
Madam Mayor, before you close up the meeting, can I ask the administration to forward those answers to us, like the email or something like that? Appreciate that.
I didn't hear that, excuse me.
I I would like to ask the administration to forward the the response, uh as those uh. Answer, so we can have a copy of this.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh Mayor Smook, I I did raise my hand, I I know we're over time, but just for my closing comments, I would just like to say that I I agree with the two points. Um councillor Ellsworth raised entirely that residents and businesses in good standing with their with their bill payments with the city of Thompson, they get hit with the one-time. Astronomical bills, I think we we need to explore as part of this appeal of a way of subtracting. You know, maintenance and administration costs that are applied to the to the to the fee that we charge for water. And maybe just giving them an at-cost settlement option, because that that is a real issue for people, as you know, like as councillor Ellsworth said. A single parent that gets a four thousand dollar bill, that's. That's that's a lot all at once, and and the hydrants comment too, I I had that conversation, or we all had that conversation at Public Works, and I think rather than fixing hydrants. Putting those flags on is a is a cheap solution, so thank you.
Uh thank you, I did notice a number of them this year that did have flags, so uh thank you, everybody, can I get a call for a German? Constor Colburn, all in favor? Thanks, everybody.